Call the December 2nd, 2024 Oakwood City Council Meeting to order. Would you please rise and join me with the pledge to the flag?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, justice for all.
May I have a roll call, please, Lori?
Mayor Duncan.
Here.
Vice Mayor Byington.
Here.
Mr. Stevens.
Here.
Mrs. Turbin.
Here.
Mrs. Jackson.
And may I have a report on the minutes of our November 4 regular session, work session, and executive session, and our November 18 work session? Councilmember Jackson.
Yes, Mayor, I've read the minutes and reviewed them and found them to be correct and accurate and make a motion that we accept them.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you, so ordered. Under status reports, I believe that we have no status reports this evening, so we will go to the visitors' portion of our meeting. We're having a public hearing, so if anyone is here to speak on the public hearing, we would ask you to keep your comments until that part of the meeting. But if you want to address council on any other issue other than the public hearing, this would be the time for you to come up to the podium and state your name and address for the record, and we would welcome you. You're all here for the public hearing, it sounds like, okay. We'll then close the visitors' portion of our meeting, and we'll go to legislation. And I believe Councilmember Jackson has a resolution.
Thank you, Mayor.
In advance of that, Your Honor.
Oh, yes, I'm sorry.
Based on the Ohio Ethics Commission recommendation, given the fact that I live across the street from this particular property, I will recuse myself and leave the dais for deliberations.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for explaining that to our people watching at home. So we'll go to Councilmember Jackson.
Thank you, Mayor. This is a resolution to grant approval of an amendment to the approved master plan for the Sugar Camp and Point Oakwood development affecting the site located at One Russell Place. This resolution would amend the Sugar Camp Point Oakwood master plan to allow for the construction of a pickleball court at the Russell Total Wealth and Wellness Building located at One Russell Place. The planning commission conducted a public hearing on this plan amendment on November 6, 2024. By a vote of three to zero, with one member absent and one recusing himself, the planning commission voted to recommend approval with certain conditions. These conditions are as follows. First, the hours of operation would be limited to 9:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. The applicant must work with city staff to develop a lighting plan that ensures lighting is no taller than 12 feet and timer-controlled. And three, use would be restricted to Russell Total Wealth and Wellness employees, clients, and prospective clients. The matter is now before council on that recommendation, and tonight we will hold our own public hearing on the application. I'm introducing a resolution to approve based on the recommendation of the planning commission. However, council was required to hold a public hearing on this proposal and has not prejudged, I'm sorry, prejudged the matter. At the conclusion of the hearing, we may vote to approve the application in its entirety, approve it with condition, or deny it altogether. If council decides to approve, as recommended by the planning commission, we will adopt the resolution as is. If we adopt the resolution with modification or additional conditions imposed by council, there is space provided on the document to write them in tonight. In the event that we deny the application altogether or otherwise depart from the planning commission's recommendation, I will withdraw this resolution as written and ask the law director to prepare legislation consistent with council's decision to be adopted at our next regular meeting in November. But this time I'd make a motion as a formality before we begin the public hearing, and I move that council adopt this resolution and ask for a second.
When a clarification, if we want to change this and have him rewrite it, we would approve it at our January meeting.
Oh, thank you.
That's my problem. And do we have a second?
A second.
Okay. So we will now begin the public hearing regarding the Sugar Camp master plan amendment that Councilmember Jackson just described. As she noted, the planning commission conducted a public hearing on this pickleball court amendment in November, and they have recommended approval with a few conditions. Under our zoning code, council is to hold its own hearing tonight before making a final decision. Before we begin, I'd like to go over that procedure for the hearing, which we will follow in our usual format. We will start with having a city staff report by planning and zoning manager Ethan Kroger summarizing the application in tonight's hearing. After the staff report, we will open the public hearing portion of the meeting to take public testimony. We will start with anyone who wishes to speak in support of the application, and then we will hear from anyone who wishes to speak against it. When the public hearing is concluded, we will close the public hearing and begin our council deliberations. Before we begin, I would like to ask the law director to swear in those who wish to testify tonight, and I would turn that over to our law director, Rob Jacks, for that process.
Thank you, Your Honor. Anyone who plans to testify tonight, if you could stand and raise your right hand? Do you all solemnly swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth in any testimony before the council tonight? Thank you.
Thank you. We do this because it is a quasi-judicial matter, and that's why we have to get testimony from those who wish to give testimony under oath. With that, Mr. Kroger, would you please present your staff report?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I know this is the, we've heard this a few times, but I'll just go over some things here briefly. A history to start off with. Under the Sugar Camp master plan and the 2017 legal settlement, the site is reserved for office use. The pickleball court is proposed as an accessory to the principal use. The law director has opined that this is allowable if approved by council. The matter before you is a refiling of the application that was originally heard by planning commission on September 4. When originally heard, the planning commission voted four to zero with one member recusing himself and recommended approval to city council. On October 7, 2024, council conducted a public hearing and heard from several of the neighbors from the Point Oakwood neighborhood who opposed the application. Due to questions about neighboring notification, council was concerned that the planning commission may not have heard a full opportunity to hear from the neighbors in fashioning its recommendation. As a result, council denied the application but expressly authorized the applicant to refile to ensure a prompt resolution. On November 6, 2024, planning commission heard the refiling of application 24-8 and voted three to zero with one member absent and one member recusing himself to recommend approval with conditions to city council. Again, 24-8 is an amendment to the Sugar Camp Point Oakwood master plan for the installation of a pickleball court to the existing site located at One Russell Place. The proposed pickleball court will be located on the south side of the property between the existing building and West Shant's Avenue. The pickleball court will be located approximately 76 feet from the public right-of-way on West Shant's Avenue and 138 feet from the east property line bordering the homes in Point Oakwood. The yellow arrow indicating here on the screen is where the proposed pickleball court will be located. In town, at the bottom of your screen here, you have West Shant's, and then kind of on the right-hand side of the screen here, here are the homes bordering the property and Point Oakwood. The proposed pickleball court would be roughly 880 square feet, which is standard-sized pickleball court. However, the overall surface will be 1,800 square feet to allow for baselines and sidelines. A 10-foot chain-link fence will enclose the court. In pursuant to Title IV, Section 304.2F, chain-link fences are permitted up to 15 feet in height around all or part of tennis courts, public or private. Just an artist's rendering of the pickleball court and the fence. Again, here, this is, you see this opening here. This will not be the case. The fence will be, the pickleball court will be completely enclosed with just an egress gate, if you will, to allow for exiting and entering. The pickleball court will feature a lighting to eliminate the court. The lighting will be located within the fencing surrounding the pickleball court. The proposed pickleball court will be heavily screened with vegetation to obstruct the view from neighboring businesses and residential properties. Again, here at the top of your screen, you can see the pickleball court and the vegetation surrounding the pickleball court, as well as mature trees surrounding the site as well. Recommendations for approval. On November 6, 2024, the planning commission recommended to council to amend the Sugar Camp Point Oakwood master plan for the installation of a pickleball court under the following conditions. The hours of operation are from 9:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. The applicant must work with city staff to develop a lighting plan to ensure the lighting is installed no higher than 12 feet and to look into using a timer for the lighting. The applicant, the applicant must restrict the use of the pickleball courts to Russell Total Wealth and Wellness employees, existing clients, and potential clients. Staff has added its own recommendations, and the following recommendations would be: Due to neighboring concerns, the applicant shall work with the city engineer and public works staff to ensure that all runoff within the disturbed area of the project is ultimately collected by the drainage infrastructure as indicated on the approved drainage plans, which myself and Chris Kuzma, the city engineer, met with the folks, the contractor, to kind of come up with a plan to make sure that this is followed every step of the way. And then a full lighting plan has been submitted by the applicant in that the lighting fixtures will be no higher than 12 feet in height and that the lights should reflect the permitted hours of operation. And ladies and gentlemen, that's all I have. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Yeah, I do. Ethan, on the lighting, can you go back to that picture?
Sure.
Of the court itself? So the, is the plan to just have the two light poles?
I don't know if, if, staff will work with the applicant to develop a lighting plan. I'm not sure of the exact location. I believe that two lights, if I remember correctly, two lights would be installed on poles inside the fencing, and I believe there would be two lights opposite inside.
So you're suggesting there's going to be four total?
That's fine.
Okay, I mean, looking at this, I'm thinking there's only two. That's why I'm asking.
I don't think that, and I can refer to the applicant, but I don't think that a definitive answer has been made on the lighting.
Because what I'm, my forethought is that this is running north-south, right? The court itself? So it would be best to have the lights on the east side of the court if it only requires two, hoping it would only require two. That way, the lights would shine towards Russell Wealth Management and the parking lot. Has that been discussed at all?
I have not discussed that with the applicant at this time.
I'm assuming that would come up in the review per the staff recommendation.
That's correct, a final lighting review.
But that happens after our approval?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
It's just for the applicant to work with our engineering department and our city engineer to ensure that any additional water runoff is captured in the approved drainage plan and city infrastructure that's already in place. The applicant has submitted a drainage study that's been reviewed by our, by our public works department and our city engineer. Chris Kuzma is here this evening. If there are any questions, he might want to...
We have more details on what that drainage plan is.
I would defer to Christopher if that's...
And that's fine. Yeah.
Hello, everybody. The applicant did submit a drainage plan, and it has been approved. The only condition that we added to as part of the staff recommendation, the only thing we added to it is that they will, they will work with us to ensure that that plan is actually being followed. We've already met with the applicant. We have a good, we have a solid plan to make sure that's adhered to.
We don't have specifics on what can be done to defer the water to the drainage down by? I'm assuming the drainage will be going down to the street?
Correct, and that is the plan. That's on the plan.
I'm looking for more specifics.
Water from the pickleball court will be captured entirely on Ledges Trail, the public infrastructure, and that's on the plan.
How are we going to route the water off the hill?
It'll be graded, it'll be graded such that, you know, any of this, any of the runoff from that pickleball court will be directed that, towards that direction.
There'll be earth movement on the hill to direct the water?
Very minimal. The grade already generally slopes that direction.
Well, I understand, it just, but earth movement, I mean, it's the only way to route water. I'm just making sure that...
Yes, sir.
There's a plan to have the water be moved so it would deter from getting closer to the homes?
Yep.
Okay.
Chris, and I'm assuming that if there is water running off where it shouldn't be, that the engineer and then the construction company will correct that then?
That is correct.
Good. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for Chris? All right. Thank you for your, both of your reports. So we will now, in our public hearing, start with anyone who wishes to speak in support of the application, and then we'll hear from anyone who wants to speak against it. And do we have anybody here that wants to speak in support? We do. If you could please come down to the podium and state your name and address for the record, and we welcome you.
Good evening, thank you, everyone. I'm Tim Parker. I'm here on behalf of the applicant, One Russell Place. And so I just want to thank everyone for being here, and I think Mr. Kroger provided a clear summary for the sequence of events that happened at the previous planning commission, or previous city council meeting, and what happened at the last planning commission meeting in November. But as such, I think there's kind of three main points I'd like to just kind of briefly discuss, and they entail what we just talked about a little bit. The first was the due process. I know Mr. Kroger talked about that, but I just wanted to acknowledge that. That was kind of the main reason why we came back here tonight from the previous city council meeting in October and last month. At planning commission, we discussed some of these drainage concerns that residents raised. And so from their comments from the meeting in October, city council meeting, and last month at the planning commission meeting in November, a lot of those comments seem somewhat unrelated to our property and project. So I understand there is the hill on the backside of Russell Total Wealth, but originally, before that, before our project, all the runoff from the upper side of Sugar Camp ran down. And so on the original project in 2017, 2018, when it was installed, we have our own drainage system that connects the roof runoff and the parking lot runoff and connects it away from the Sugar Camp site. And so any new runoff will be just from this pickleball court. And as it relates to our project, we did provide a, we did have our professional engineer prepare a drainage study and a plan that was reviewed and approved by the city engineer, and we did meet on-site a few weeks ago. And our plan does call out to have that new, the, I just want to clarify that the new development will be directed towards the infrastructure in Ledges Trail. There is the existing precedent with that hill. That's just the hill. All the runoff from the upper side goes to the parking lot. But that hill does have runoff that is not associated with this project. So I just want to clarify that it's going to be directed just for this part of the project. We're not going to be earth-moving the whole hill. That, does that make sense? Because if we didn't do this project, that existing condition would be stated, and that's what was approved in the original master plan. So we're just associating our drainage study with the new pickleball court. And so, so as it relates to our project, like I said, it was a...
I just can't hear you.
Okay, I'm sorry. I'll speak more loudly into the mic. Do you want me to?
Just that last part.
Sure, so, so from the, we had our drainage study reviewed and approved by the city engineer here at Oakwood. And so as it relates to our project, as far as directing new runoff down to the hill, it's just for the pickleball court. It's not the existing hill that's in the back of the property as it is right now. That is an existing condition. And then, thank you. And then the second, or the third main item is, was noise concerns that were raised at the, if you remember from the last city council meeting in October. Just kind of wanted to talk about our main design considerations for the project and how it relates to noise. So the first is sighting and site location. The court really is in the most feasible location on site. And as Mr. Kroger mentioned, it's 138 feet from the nearest Point Oakwood home and 78 feet from Shant's Avenue. It's closer to about 150 feet from any structure. And I do believe it's a, you know, it's a reasonable distance away. And this location really does provide a physical buffer on three sides. We have the Russell Total Wealth Building on one side, Shant's Avenue on the other, with mature vegetation along the roadway, and then the third being the parking lot. And then the second main design consideration was our landscaping plan. It's well above code minimum. We spent a lot of time to develop a plan that we thought was appropriate for the pickleball court. It has about 36-foot-tall arborvitae that surround the whole court that Mr. Kroger showed on the slide. And then it has 10 or so large evergreen trees that also be, that will also be planted and will be even taller at full maturity. And so these two layers of screening really do not only heavily screen the pickleball court, but does provide an added buffer for, for noise. And then lastly, as far as design considerations, is really just the hours of operation and then access and control to the court. So our hours of operation are nine to eight, 9:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. Those are outside of the noise ordinance, as I understand it, in the city. And then secondly is control. The court will be fenced and locked at all times, and access will be controlled by Russell. And then the last comment I really want to make is the couple legit, what I, what I consider legitimate existing precedents within the city. The first being the Wonderly Avenue courts. There's two courts in a highly populated area. They're, they're less than 30 feet from homes, and there's what I would call a lack of screening compared to what we're showing on our landscape plan. And from the best of my knowledge and research, there has not been any noise complaints related to pickleball. And then secondly, I believe it was in October, planning commission approved a residential court not too far from where our court is going to be. I feel like those two precedents really help to kind of show what we're showing here. And so with that, I just kind of wanted to address our com, the original comments and here to answer any additional questions. Thank you.
Any questions for the applicant?
Yeah, so the drainage study that's been approved, would it take a lot to work the rest of the hill and, you know, and contribute, and do some of the drainage work on the hill to cover the rest of the hill, to get that all to go to Ledges?
I'm not an engineer, so that was not part of our study. The hill, it's a large hill, so we're just at the top of the hill, and we're directing water kind of towards Shant's Avenue and then towards Ledges. We're trying to stay as far away from that neighborhood as possible. I don't feel as though this project should be responsible for that, those improvements, if there needs to be.
I understand that, but Russell owns the hill.
Yes, sir.
So I'm looking to see who owns the hill. I think they're responsible if they can contribute to stopping the water runoff. Now, because I don't know, you know, I didn't get the answer on how, I understand it's just for the pickleball court, but it's not for the rest of the hill. I don't know if that's a third of it or if it's half of it. You know, I'm just asking, is it possible to address the entire hill to help with the runoff off the hill that Russell sits on top of? I'm just asking the question.
Yes, sir. Yeah, no, and I appreciate it. It's a good question. I want to make sure we answer it and that everybody's on the same page and feels comfortable. I don't, we were not required to look at that. But what I will say is, the Ledges Road, so that's a hill that all drains, I guess that drains, it's kind of north towards downtown. Ledges Trail, where that road is, that catch basin would be higher than the rest of the, than the lower part of the hill, if that makes sense, as you go around. So I don't know how...
Well, the lower part that's down by the bottom, I understand that.
Yes, sir.
I meant the area that's still open, because there's, there's trees there that I'm not, I'm talking about the area at the top. More or less, it's almost half of it.
Okay.
I can't cite which home it is. I'm sorry, somebody might live in it, but the, the one that, I'm going to say three, four houses in. Because that's the one that would touch or be below the Russell property is what I'm getting at.
Okay.
That's what I'm getting at. So I'm just asking if it's possible, and maybe we need to ask our city engineer if that's something that could be done. If not, I'm just asking if it's possible to look into that from Russell, who is the property owner. That's what I'm getting at.
Okay.
It might be something we need to keep in mind. My next question is the lighting. Do you have that answer that I asked earlier?
Yes, sir. So there is, we are proposing four light poles. So that was just a cross-section rendering.
Okay.
And if we need to work with staff, and it needs to be that they only need to be on the east side, I mean, I think we'd be amenable to that. We're not, and again, it's not, it's not a football stadium. We're not trying to, we did a photometrics plan, and it, the light pollution is really just around the court itself, and that was submitted and reviewed and approved as well, so.
Well, I'm just looking at, I think, since it runs north-south, that they were on the east side, the lights, I mean, looking at the style that was on there, and I'm assuming unless they're going to be straight down, I'm sure there, there're going to be a certain style of light that's going to forward light to one area?
Yes, sir, yeah.
Or each half? If they, because I'm sure there's some that could light up the whole court and just have two. I'm sure that is possible. If it is, I'd rather see it on the east side where it's, they're facing the Russell building and not on the west side where some of the homeowners could see the lights that are shining down on the court.
Sure, yeah, no, we could, if you're comfortable with it, I would like to talk to our photometric engineer and work with staff, but if it needs to be an amendment or part of the plan, I mean, we're open to that. That's not something we want to challenge.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Yep.
I had a question about the landscaping. The way that picture looked, every one of those little circles all the way around the court, every one of those was a separate arborvitae?
Yes, sir, yeah, there's 30 arborvitae that are six feet tall around the court.
So is it possible that you wouldn't even be able to see this court once these arborvitae's get installed and start growing? I mean, from, if looking at it from shots, but if it's surrounding the entire thing, I'm trying to figure out if you can even see this thing?
It's going to be heavily screened. I don't want to, screened, I don't want to say that you would not be able to see it at all. I mean, you will have a fence that's taller than six feet tall, and they are spaced, I believe, every three or four feet on center. So there, there will be some visibility of the court, but in general, it's, it's heavily screened.
Okay, and then remind me again about the large trees you're putting?
Yeah, there's, there's, they're another form of arborvitae, but they're going to be planted at six, there's about 10 of them, and they're set back from the court, and that's just to help with additional screening from some different sightlines that our landscape architect proposed. And like I said, there's 10 of them. They're going to be planted around six feet tall at maturity, and I believe at full maturity, they'll be closer to 20 feet.
Okay. I don't know the answer to this question. I don't know if, if you do either. Is all of this vegetation that's going to be putting on, will that exacerbate water runoff, or would it help mitigate water runoff?
In my opinion, it would, it would help mitigate water from being able to saturate the soil. The water would saturate the soil and then be taken in from the trees, but...
Okay.
But I don't want to say definitively one way or the other.
Right, that's, that's helpful. I'm just trying to, I'm looking at, I'm envisioning the arborvitae's behind my house to screen it from my neighbor, and my, it's probably not, it's definitely apples to, apples to oranges, but I've just, does, the arborvitae's help with screening and with water runoff? But, you know, I suppose other people could have different opinions.
Yes, sir, yeah, so.
All right, any other questions for this applicant? All right, thank you for your testimony. Does anyone else that's in favor of the application wish to speak at this point? Again, thank you, thank you for your, your testimony. So we'll now listen to people that want to speak against the application. And I suspect there was at least a half a dozen of you, I thought, that stood up and did the O, so whoever wants to come up first is welcome to, come to the podium and state your name and address for the record.
Go.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Three minutes.
Oh, yes. We, we normally have a three-minute rule on testimony. I, I, I have the discretion to liberally adjust that timing. I'm looking at a clock. But I would also ask you, in addition to that, if someone who spoke against the application, you know, and brings up various points to the, you know, we don't, I don't need a whole bunch of repetitive people saying the same thing. But if you have something that you think is an additional point of clarification of maybe a previous speaker, that's more than welcome. So who would like to address council now? Okay, we, we have a winner. Okay, if you can state your name and address for the record, and welcome.
My name is Mark Farrell. I live at 241 Point Oakwood Way. I am on the corner of Point Oakwood and Ledges. I am exactly below the Russell building. I think the biggest concern probably for most of us is noise. I hear the runoff talk and stuff like that. I don't worry about that because I'll start yelling if it's a problem. Most municipalities are, are taking care of the pickleball craze by redoing courts that are tennis courts and overlaying, you know, pickleball diagrams on them and stuff like that. And most of those are in parks that are already existing, and the people move there because of the noise. They knew that there was going to be a park there. They knew there was going to be noise. I'd say my biggest disappointment since I've been at Point Oakwood was first coming out on my patio and seeing a commercial on the back of the building. I didn't think that the Russell name needed to be on the back of the building. It was fine on the front. And I get a lot of questions from guests that I have on my patio, how did that happen? Now I'm going to have to explain to them the noise that we hear and the signage that's up there. And I don't think that's right. And I don't think that my neighbors on Point Oakwood or my neighbors on Shance should have to put up with the noise, possibly put up with the lights. The arborvitae will probably grow and eventually maybe hide the courts, but it's probably not in my lifetime. So I just don't think that the positioning of the court at that particular spot is a good idea.
Does anyone have any questions for this citizen? All right, well, thank you for your testimony. That was clear and concise. We appreciate it. Good standard. Who else would like to address council? Welcome. State your name and address for the record, please.
Yeah, my name's Craig Rowan. I live at 135 Ascent Circle. Previously lived at Running Moots. I've been here for 13 years. Just a little more detail on that. You didn't want repetition, but again, this is, I don't want to say reinventing the wheel, but actually municipalities across the country have looked at sound issue. Many municipalities require things like librarian pickleballs. That's what they're called because they're quiet. Or they'll require owl paddles that are based on hours of the, of use or based on how close pickleball courts are to homes. Many places, you have to check out the librarian balls if they're within certain areas. Because for some people, and I have no idea if, if I'm this group, I have no idea if any of us would be in this group, the 70 decibel sound that happens with a pickleball, hitting a pickleball rattle or a paddle is akin to having a freeway placed in the neighborhood, right? So if we had a freeway being placed in Oakwood, there would be a longer line of people signing up. For some people, the unique strike of the high-pitched pickleball against the pickleball racket is, is very off-putting. And again, it's about 70 decibels. These are all numbers that, you know, could be easily verified and are used as, in lawsuits around the country based on, you know, approvals that have been given by municipalities. And then people, you know, fighting against that or trying to rectify that. So again, drainage was brought up. I, I share my neighbor's concern that it's really the sound mitigation. It's going to take a long time for arborvitae trees to grow large enough, to have a dense enough foliage, to provide significant sound protection. And so from 9:00 till 8:00, you know, you know, seven days a week, with, you know, it'd be a relative perk of, you know, again, a lot of us know about broad-based index funds, so why would we need Russell Financial, but except, hey, there's a pickleball court to join, why not? I could see it be very, very, being very popular. And again, if it's, if it's used regularly, the, the amount of sound generated for at least some portion of the population could be very, very off-putting. And I, I say this to someone who lives actually pretty far. I live further from him. I'm at the further end of Point Oakwood. But I still share this concern, you know, for my, for my neighbors. I didn't come to talk about the Russell building when it was placed, because I was like, hey, that's fine. That'll be a good addition to, to that open space. I didn't have any concerns about that. There are a lot of things that could be proposed to this, Sugar Camp slash Point Oakwood. It is a sugar slam, Sugar Camp slash Point Oakwood. So I would hope that some of our, my neighbors' and my concerns would be given some merit as, as the name of our neighborhood is literally the master plan. But the concern for having, you know, some, some, something generating 70 decibels, which you always could, you could all turn on something YouTube at 70 decibels. There are simulators of what this sounds like. I actually wish we had a boombox so we could hold this meeting with a 70-decibel sound pickleball court going on. As we were having this discussion, it might be, you know, useful. But again, the sound mitigation is, to me, not addressed well enough by saying at some point, these arborvitae trees will grow enough to, to block the sound that we'll all hear. I think a lot of our Shance neighbors will actually hear it more, and some of the people here may be from Shance. I, I think this was identified as a Point Oakwood issue, but people on Shance, people all through Hatcher Hills are likely to, to hear this, beyond just the Point Oakwood.
Anyone have a question for this person?
Yes, I do.
Yes, ma'am.
Hi, Craig. Did you mention, did you say that there, they've already developed like either paddles or balls that are library?
Yeah, they, that's required by many municipalities. So again, so Colorado is where I was stationed before I was PC, moved here by the Air Force and subsequently retired. And I don't know why they, they came up in the searches, or I think it's just Colorado's been growing. But the, a lot of the municipalities have rules like no pickleball courts within 200 feet, or within 500 feet of homes, or within 200 feet, they have to use what are called librarian pickleballs, which are silent pickleballs, not the traditional pickleballs. Or they have to use what are called owl paddles, which are silent paddles.
What was the paddle called?
I, I think there are multiple brands, but they're called Owl. O-W-L.
Okay.
I'm, I don't own stock in any of these companies. Exactly. So, so again, the, the fact that there's been this level of technology built and municipalities that have rules like this goes to the fact that for some people, this is a big, the sound issue is a big issue. This isn't like, oh, a couple, you know, a couple of people showed up with these concerns about, you know, they wanted, they just don't want anything built in their backyard, literally. And they're going to, you know, come with some, some ridiculous reason. No, again, this is considered a major noise issue to some people. Again, some people can probably tolerate living next to a freeway. Some people can tolerate the pickleball strike. For a lot of people, it's, it's unbearable. And again, the fact that there have been technologies built, policies made by other municipalities to address the noise. You know, as I sit here hearing about the rescheduled October meeting, hadn't got notice, redone it. I, I hear very little about sound mitigation. I hear very little about, was there a study commissioned? Was there estimates on, on how much sound protection will we would get from arborvitae's? When we would get that, after they've grown enough? You know, how, how would it, you know, would, would there be enforcement? I would assume not. Like, what if we do think it's too loud? What, anybody in their right mind thinks it's too loud? You know, it's been approved that that's what we got. And to my satisfaction, I don't think we've had a lot of, you know, forework done to, what I would hope would be questions you would have as our advocates to say, well, gosh, yeah, never mind, those, those sound issues, we can blow them off. In fact, I think you would find that other municipalities have found that these sound issues are actually quite substantial.
Other questions? I have one.
Yes, sir.
You call them a librarian ball?
That, that's one of the brands. That was what-
Librarian is a brand name-
That's a brand of librarian pickleballs that don't have kind of a-
Concept is be quiet in the library is a marketing scheme. Do we have any idea is that, I thought this was, pickleballs are about the size of, at least what I thought was like, the size of like a wiffle ball. A big wiffle ball, not a-
Yeah, very similar.
And, and I guess, is there a significant cost difference between a librarian pickleball and a ball I can go buy at Dick's Sporting Goods?
I think it's all about enforcement. I don't know if there's a huge difference. It would be a question of, are there, you know, protocols put into place where, for instance, this pickleball court was approved, but it must be used with librarian balls as opposed to traditional pickleballs? Or they have to be used with the fancy paddles and, you know, so that, that's one, one of the approaches that a lot of municipalities, you know, sitting in your chair often, often require when they've looked at this.
And the paddle, to me, it looks like an oversized ping pong paddle. Is that, I don't know if it has grooves or any fancy technology like tennis rackets. Do you have any concept on that?
Why, so typically, so actually pickleball, you know, so I, I play a little pickleball. It's great. You can go up to, you could spend hundreds of dollars on lightweight, like Kevlar pickleball rackets that, you know, just have a little bit better bounce to them, maybe put a little less strain on your forearms and your lateral collateral ligament and things. And so most of the quote-unquote expensive pickleball paddles are to kind of improve performance, kind of a weight, bounce factor. These sound mitigating pickleball paddles, I think some people think they're fine, but they are also a lot more expensive. And what, and, and I believe it's just got a little bit of a bounce that especially when used with the lower volume balls, you know, turns it into more of a, a tennis, tennis ball sound, right? Again, I, I don't want to speak for everyone who's in the, in the against group. I think many of us wouldn't care if there was a tennis court there. I would have no qualms with a tennis court there. In fact, you'd probably put in half as many, for me speaking myself, you'd probably put in as half, half as many arborvitae trees, from my perspective.
You've obviously never heard me play tennis.
Sure, the grunts, the dives.
Lot of grunting, yes, a lot of grunting. You don't want a tennis court there.
So only, only well-tempered or, or high-achieving tennis players. Again, there are a lot of things that could be put on there that, that don't generate the sound that, again, I was kind of surprised to hear. This was sort of news to me that like, wow, pickleballs make that, pickleball courts make that much noise? People have this much passion about it? This was news to me. And when I looked at it, it kind of dropped my, it was jaw-dropping to see what was potentially going to be built, you know, within a few hundred feet. Again, I'm actually, Pat, if you look on a map, I'm past the point where, like, I was, had to be notified, I found, from my neighbors. And I was like, oh, wow, I want to certainly support their efforts to, you know, try to get this sound.
Clarify for me in my mind, your address is, you said 145?
I'm 135 Ascent Circle. I'm much closer to the apartment buildings.
Okay, so you're down the hill.
Yeah, I'm way down, yeah, I'm way down the hill. I'm two from the end.
Got it.
Exactly. So again, I actually might not hear much, but you know, I, I walk in my neighborhood. I, I'm a physician. I work at the Sugar Camp, you know, offices. So I, so I walk up to get there. I mean, I'll, I'll see them, you know, it's fine. I walk by the Russell building, all that. But again, it's the sound, you know, for, for my neighbors that I, that I have concerns about. Yes, ma'am.
And what is the difference between the, the regular balls and the librarian balls in terms of the sound, the decimals?
Again, from my understanding, and I, I'm not here as a, as a librarian brand or owl brand salesmen by any means. Again, in my research, just first of all, to figure out, was this that big of a deal? Because I wasn't the one who necessarily raised issues. My, our neighbors on our, our local group, our Facebook group were like, oh, that turns out this is a big deal. When I looked into it, I was, I was, I was quite surprised. And then I was like, well, how, what do, what do, you know, well-intentioned communities want to do? And what kind of mitigation effects do they do for their sound? And so, again, the, when, when using the low-volume sound mitigating equipment, apparently it brings it closer to just like tennis ball volume, which most people consider, you know, not a big deal compared to this, again, 70-decibel recurrent high-strike, high-pitch sound that pickleballs generate, so. And again, some of it is the volume, I didn't mean to interrupt you, sir, but some of it is the volume. Again, these could be very popular. It'd be great, I guess, for Oakwood Fitness, but, but it could mean that from 9:00 AM to 8:00 PM, kind of like tee time, this could be, you know, generating, you know, pickleball volume for, you know, 11 hours a day, for seven days a week, about 138 feet from my closest neighbors, you know, so.
Okay, that was, well, that was something I had never heard of, is a sound-reducing pickleball.
Yeah, yeah, they, they exist, and that's something that, you know, again, this is mandated by many municipalities.
Okay, well, thank you for your testimony.
Of course, absolutely. No, thank you for your time. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Who else would like to speak regarding this application? Welcome, if you can state your name and address for the record.
Garrett Orleski, 205 Point Oakwood Way. I find it interesting that Ethan's presentation started with business district and right next to it, pickleball court. There's many studies that you can look up, and I hope you guys find it as interesting as the library balls versus the regular balls. But 10 to 20% in depreciative, depreciating property values when a pickleball court goes in next to their residences. Collectively, as residences, we represent over a quarter of a million dollars to the city of Oakwood in city taxes. And we're fighting over one office building in an office district to put in a pickleball court on a hill that is going to shine down on all of us, the noise level we just heard about. And the ongoing concern, and I appreciate your concern about it, your ongoing concern about it, and the water issues. I just really feel that, and I hope that you really take into consideration these concerns. And just going back to the September 4th meeting, and I'm presuming, since this is so detailed in these minutes, that's why it was in the November 6th meeting moved forward. The findings, if you look at the minutes, are all subjective. What is being proposed should have minimal impact on the surrounding neighborhood. There is nothing to suggest the public health, safety, morals, comfort, convenience of general welfare will not be at risk. There is a possibility that lighting and unrestricted hours of operation could interfere with the reasonable use of neighboring properties. Where are the objective studies on this? It just feels like, once again, that for whatever reason, this office building is getting preferential treatment to an owner that doesn't even live in the city of Oakwood versus all of us. And so I hope you take us into consideration. Thank you.
Thank you. No, any questions for him? Who else would like to address council?
My name's Steve Bynton. I live at 24 West Shance Avenue, across the street from the property. I will keep my comments brief. Basically, I agree with the fact that I think that noise is going to be the biggest issue here. Where I live, I'm on the top of the hill, so water's not an issue for me. But I completely understand that studies have been done and all those things are going to be an issue and will be addressed. Lighting also, for me, is not really a, much of a concern because this thing is going to close down at 8:00 each night, which would mean the lights would go off at that time period. I see more of the lights from the stadium at 10, 11, 12:00 at night. And the glow of that doesn't really concern me. So having it across the street doesn't really concern me as much. The sound issue does concern me and my wife. You know, as was mentioned, you're looking at something about 70 decibels for an extended period of time. I don't think anybody has ever seen any study or anything that says the sound of a pickleball is a desirable noise. I don't think anybody's ever said that that's something that they enjoy hearing. Uh, so at the end of the day, I think what we have is a situation where we have, uh, one particular, um, person in the city who is a business and is, was mentioned is not a resident, who wants to create an undesirable noise. And then we have a bunch of residents who do live here, have chosen to live in this community, who don't like the ideal of that undesirable noise being adjacent to their house. So I think, you know, it's up to this group to decide, you know, what's in the best interest of the overall community? Is the interest of one particular entity, does it outweigh the, the interests of the surrounding community, the residents, the ones who, um, have chosen to live in the, the community and will have to deal with this in perpetuity? So that's, yeah, that's my comment. Any questions?
Thank you. Any questions? All right.
Yep.
Thank you. You can please state your name and address for the record and we welcome you as well.
Thank you. I am Roger Crum. I live at 159 Aberdeen, but I'm here, excuse me, I'm here speaking on behalf of my father-in-law, John Edie, who lives at 121 Ascent Circle. And I'm also here in support of his neighbors, uh, several of whom you've, you've heard from. One of the things that I would point out is that, um, the Point Oakwood neighborhood has been for years, uh, celebrated and indeed marketed as a community that is very attractive to retirees and senior citizens, uh, many of whom, including my father-in-law, um, purchased properties there because they, um, admired and wanted the, uh, the wooded environment that backs up, uh, to the neighborhood there, uh, and is the wooded area, uh, immediately adjacent to this pickleball, ball court and downstream, if you will, of the pickleball court. That is an amenity in Oakwood which is actually quite rare, uh, with the exception of the Hills and Dales neighborhood and the communities that are adjacent to that. Uh, very few other areas in the city have such an amenity, which is one of the reasons why people have chosen to purchase property in that neighborhood. That neighborhood is increasingly populated by senior citizens like my father-in-law, who are not away during the day, but indeed in my father-in-law's case, and he lives immediately adjacent to Craig, whom you, you heard from, uh, he is out on his back porch all day long in Clement weather, uh, all year long as much as he can. He likes to be back there.
I could ask you, I need to go to the restroom. And you can continue to speak to my other people, or if we could take a two minute break.
Whichever you prefer, sir.
I'd say, go ahead and continue for the rest.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Roger, I appreciate it.
Thank you. So he and I presume others are, um, in, in, enjoy their, their properties precisely because of those backyard amenities and the tranquility of the backyard spaces. He's also very hard of hearing, um, and, um, sharp noises are very disturbing to individuals who are hard of hearing, particularly those who wear sensitive hearing aids. And, uh, we've heard a good bit about the decibel levels of the pickleball court and the, the concerns that that raises. And so, uh, I, I really, in summary, would speak to the issue that that is a neighborhood, uh, in which citizens have purchased properties in that neighborhood precisely because of the tranquility of that neighborhood. And this, this proposal threatens to, um, compromise that. Thank you.
Anyone else, uh, care to speak? Yeah, come on up. Thank you.
Hello, uh, my name's Marietta Orlowski and I live at 205 Point Oakwood Way. I've been here before to, um, to speak about this pickleball court. And I'm still befuddled every time I learn something new or come to one of these sessions. Again, um, in this neighborhood, and I'm not going to repeat myself, but, um, what I'd like to focus on is, um, the standard for special use. And that's really what we're here about. And, you know, we read the minutes from the meeting that we were not, um, invited to where the initial approval happened. And so we've been, many of us have been trying to play catch up. You know, we're not zoning experts, we're not, you know, that's why we have representatives, that's why we pay taxes and things like that, but we felt like we needed to become our own best advocates. Because many of the, you know, when we read through the standards for special use, a very loud noise nuisance violates many of these, um, standards for special use. And I'd just like to highlight a couple, um, but specifically E, and Roger had started to mention, um, this, but the operation will not significantly adverse affect the use of our, of our homes. And that's so untrue. If you've been to our neighborhood, part of, um, the design of most of those houses is a very large back, back patio. You know, my, we entertain a lot on our back patio. Our neighbor who is not here, but our understanding sent an email, um, in, um, non-support as well, hosts many Oakwood School fundraising events on his back patio. You know, to have a pickleball court, you know, um, our other neighbor talked about using his patio. So having a pickleball court with that loud noise directly impacts our ability to use part of our home. So it doesn't meet the standard of special use. And that's just one of the sta- the standards that you're supposed to consider. The other standard that my husband was talking about, it will impact our property values. That's another standard. There, it will impact our comfort. That I remind you that, you know, while we can talk about whether we like pickleball, whether we don't, how long we've lived here, you know, what the prioritizations are, um, the considerations are based upon special use. And a pickleball court in a business district disrupting 20 homes, to me, the, the decision is easier than what, what is happening or what I, what I, what I fear is, fear is happening. You know, you, somebody previously said it and I apologize, there's just so much going on in my head related to this, um, proposal. You're our advocates. You know, I look to this side of the table, you're our advocates, you're our neighbors. And we ask for you to consider us as the priority. While I understand maybe this, the city has a balancing act with businesses and residents, you know, consider us and the use of our homes that generate a quarter of a million dollars in real estate taxes, and that's not even talking our income taxes. So please, review those standards for special use and, and reflect upon the scope of information that we've presented to you. And, and I do thank you for your time and your consideration.
Uh, quick question, uh, only because you brought it up about, you keep coming back to meetings and we hope you do come to more. We always like to see people in the audience.
Sure.
Very rare.
Sure.
I love this meeting because we have people sitting here, we're not talking to empty seats. Do you have an answer as to why only, from what I understand, only two residents came to the planning commission meeting?
Well, Monday at 4:30 is a difficult time. You know, to, I said this kind of flippantly, but to be able to purchase a 500, $600,000 home, people are generally working. And so, you know, great, many of them were working. I had to leave work and I went back to work after I, I left.
Okay.
You know, and I asked you to look at the number of residents here, and it's also my understanding, and please correct me if I'm wrong, that four of my neighbors who weren't able to be here wrote pretty lengthy detailed emails as well.
Okay.
So most of the neighborhood is represented here tonight.
Well, I understand that. I'll, just for future knowledge, so you know, all the emails were sent. I believe we only got two however, but we cannot, we can't use any of that in those emails because it has to be part of this quasi judicial meeting. So unfortunately, anything that was said in those emails cannot be used for our decision. Now, none of us here are naive enough to think that, because I did read the emails. It's not like I said, oh, not going to read it. I was just concerned, and I, I appreciate your answer on the 4:30 meeting.
Yeah.
I told, I was just curious as to why, um, because we're trying to evaluate some things right now. And we did set up that meeting because you weren't notified of the first one. Then when I found out after the fact that only two residents showed up, I was a little concerned about that. And I just want to make sure-
Yeah.
That's the rea- and that reason is fine. Thank you. I appreciate your honesty.
He had class.
No, 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 no.
Frank Sermon was in surgery.
I get it, I get it.
Okay.
I, I love your answer. That's fine.
Yeah.
Thank you very much.
Yeah.
I, I love that everybody's working, trust me.
Right, sure, yeah. And, you know, I, I would say as to whether you can consider the emails or not, you know, again, I serve on a board, a county agency board and, and when I am out and about, people talk to me and share ideas and that's how representation occurs, that we're of the community so that we can represent the community. And I would hope that that representation just doesn't happen on Monday night when I'm standing here in front of you. So, so thank you for that.
Thank you.
Thank you. And Roger, thank you for, um, who else would like to, uh, address counsel at this time? Okay, yes, I was going to ask you to come back up. If, is there anybody else on the opposition side? Got one?
No. Thank you though.
Yeah, that's, that's not, that's not necessary. Thank you.
Fine, thank you.
Okay, would you like to, uh, I, I'd like to ask you a couple of questions about some of the issues here.
Yes, sir.
But go ahead, I'd, I'd have-
No, if you want to ask your questions first, that's fine. I was going to just address a couple of comments in general, but-
Please do, please go ahead.
Just more in general, just for you all to consider as well, I, I, I respect both sides and I, I understand that. And so, one of the big, one of the big things we heard is noise, noise concerns and, and I respect that. And I'm no acoustic engineer and I don't think anybody else here as well, but a lot of those studies talk about multiple court setups, four to eight courts, that's how you get a louder, um, distribution of noise from what I understand. I'm not saying that 70 decibels on one court is not possible, but all those studies focus on multiple court configurations, typically four to eight courts in like a public setting. Secondly, we're, we're proposing one court, um, that's, that's an added wellness benefit because Russell is total wealth and wellness. And so, as part of their, um, amenities to their clients, they provide additional, um, resources for them. And then one of the other things that I, I just want to comment on is the, we, we have restricted our hours of operation and we are outside of the noise ordinance. And, um, as far as noise is concerned, I, I really do think, um, the amount of vehicles on, um, far hills every day, if you think about it, on some of those porches has got to be similar to, um, an hour of pickleball at rush hour. So I just, that was brought up at planning commission, that was one of the comments that we talked about as well as, is that. And then lastly, I just, I really want to go back to the existing precedent set at planning commission in October. It's, I looked back at some of my notes, it was 1100 Ridgeway Drive, which is about a half a mile from here. That court was approved, that's a residential court, it's one court. And we're not proposing that the court's going to be set up with players from nine a, nine AM to eight PM. It's just an opportunity as everybody works throughout the day to have a, have a, have a little bit of time for Russell to, um, provide time for their clients. So that, that's just my general comments.
Go ahead.
I have, um, a question regarding, how is, how are you going to handle people that want to play, that want to access the court from six to eight PM, sort of outside the usual hours?
Yes, ma'am, that's a great question. Um, Russell is going to control access, so they would have to email Russell ahead of time to gain access, a key to the court. And then, like, one of their members, one of the employees at Russell would have to manage their time there.
Is there someone there usually between six and eight?
Not regularly, but if somebody wants to use pickleball, that would be part of their, part of the, um, control plan. But nobody else, the, nobody will able to just park in that parking lot and then walk up and use the court. They'd have to coordinate ahead of time, the court will be locked at, with the gate at all times.
Other questions? I'm in, I'm intrigued about the librarian pickleball. Just bring your own equipment or are they going to pick up a pickleball ball, a pickleball ball and mallet from, or paddle from, from Russell, uh, to go out to play? Because they're, they have to come into your building and probably meet with the investment guy and, and then go out and work off the steam that the investment guy puts them through.
Yeah, yeah, yes, sir. Yeah, no, I would imagine that the people that are, and it's a great question, I can't say that it's been fully considered to this level with the, um, owl pickleball paddles and the library balls. But, uh, as, as was referenced before, pickleball paddles stem from, you know, the $10 paddle you can get at Dick's Sporting Goods to, um, higher end paddles. And then I imagine that the people that are wanting to use this court have their preferred paddle and ball that they would like to use. But I, I imagine that Russell will have the basic paddles there, but I, I don't know about restricting. We haven't talked about-
Right, I, well, I, I don't know why you'd ever talk about it because this is the first time I've ever heard of it myself, so.
Yes, sir.
Okay. You wouldn't be opposed to providing, uh, noise canceling pickleball paddles and balls to your customers?
I guess not, but we, I, I, it's hard to say, I haven't looked into it, I don't know the cost differences. I, I, I don't, I don't know.
Bill, if I may, I, I'm going to jump in here on this. I think asking for these librarian balls and owl paddles, whatever they're called, I, I don't think it's a, it, it's not a factor. It's, it, there's no way it would be enforceable. It only takes one person to bring a regular ball and a regular paddle if this is what we're worried about. There's no way, who's going to enforce it? We'd have to rely on Russell. And nothing against Russell, but are they going to tell their clients they can't use their paddles and their balls? This is a, this, I think the balls that Mr. Rohan suggested are not practical at all if we're concerned about noise at all.
Well, I guess the, the point of where I was going with that is, is when, when we approved hours outside of our standard for the Insomnia Cookie Place, the biggest complaint that the neighborhood had there was noise. And so we put a proviso in, in the, uh, in the approval of Insomnia Cookies that if there were, we could reduce the hours if there were noise complaints. We gave them a year to come up with that. I think that is too long to wait in this case, if there's real, a true concern on noise, but that we would have the option. And, and as it turned out, we didn't have a single noise complaint. And, and so I don't, you know, I was, I was just noodling over that in my mind, but that's really more part of our deliberations as opposed to, you know, inquiries from you. So I was, I, I just had, I was intrigued by that testimony.
Yeah.
Do you have anything else you'd like to close on?
No, I mean, if, if noise is truly the main concern, we can revisit hours of operation if that's one considera- if that would be an appealing consideration. I mean, we, we did, we chose nine AM to eight PM because it's specifically outside of the city ordinance hour, um, noise hours. And it provides the most opportunity for people to come play that do work and have different lifestyle shifts or lifestyle, um, yeah, so.
Okay.
That, that's just another consideration that I wanted to, to mention. We're, we're happy to discuss and talk about that.
All right. Well, thank you. Any other questions for him? All right. Well, thank you for your testimony.
Thank you all.
Now, Roger, I'll give you 90 seconds because I'll have to, I'll have to go to the restroom again if you keep talking.
Thank you very much, Mayor. I rose earlier to speak on behalf of my father-in-law and, uh, his very serious concerns about the potential arrival of a pickleball court. And we've heard the concerns of the other residents in the neighborhood about the possible detrimental, uh, results of this in the neighborhood. What we've not heard is why this is in any manner necessary to Russell. I have no problem with the Russell building being there. I think it's a fine looking piece of modern architecture, but the argument has not been made that Russell employees, Russell clients, or Russell prospective clients, if they can't play pickleball, will adversely affect the business success of Russell. Whereas we have heard some very serious concerns that this can be detrimental to the property values and the enjoyment of the property of the residents of Point Oakwood. So I just ask the council to, um, contemplate what really is the point- So I just ask the council to contemplate what really is the point of this, and whether it's necessary for Russell employees, clients, and prospective clients, and does the absence of a pickleball court adversely affect their business prospects? And I think the answer to that is no, unless the gentleman can speak otherwise.
Thank you for your comments, okay. I believe everyone that wanted to speak has spoken, and Roger always gets to speak twice, as we know by history at this Oakwood Council. Okay. So at this point, I will close the public hearing, and council will now deliberate and decide, again, what Councilmember Jackson said, either to accept it as the resolution as written, or to accept it with additional conditions that are already in there, or to deny it. Is that our three choices? Mr. Law Director?
Yes.
Okay, all right.
And if you're going to impose additional conditions beyond the three that the Planning Commission recommended, we'll need to write those in tonight.
Yes. And if we write, well, I thought that if we had additional conditions, we would write them, and then we would approve it at our January meeting. Is that incorrect?
No, you can approve it tonight.
Okay.
We'll go ahead and run it in on the documents tonight.
Okay, all right. Does everybody understand that?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. So who would like to start the deliberations?
Well, I'd like to ask our city manager and our attorney, who has a longer history. Did I hear correctly that there's never been a complaint about the pickle courts at the, is it the Wonderly Park?
I'm not aware of any complaints at all. The, the court at Orchard, it's at Orchardly Park there, between Wonderly and Orchard. The, I think it's the northern of the two tennis courts that was repurposed as a pickleball court, and it's adjacent to residential properties, probably about 30 feet, 20 to 30 feet away from the nearest home there. To my knowledge, we've had no complaints about that.
Have we had any complaints about the tennis courts from the surrounding neighbors?
Those tennis courts at, at that park? No.
No, not there, at, behind the OCC. Again, because I just wonder with the, the usual traffic, if even the tennis court sound carries.
I'm not aware of any, I've been not aware of any noise-based complaints. I know when, when the parking lot was being proposed and built there, we had some concerns about that. I don't recall any specific complaints that were actually made about that, and certainly not since that's been built. But I don't, I'm not aware of any noise complaints.
The only complaint I recall about the basketball court, which we turned into a pickleball court at Orchardly Park, was players getting rowdy and using foul language.
Well, it's still a basketball court.
That one's still a basket, yeah, you're correct. But, but that was during COVID, and we haven't had any recent complaints, even, you know, folks pick up basketball games and that sort of thing. Is that accurate?
Yes.
Yes, okay.
Bill, I, going into this meeting, I've been torn on this ever since we saw it the first time, because I knew it was coming back to us, because it was going to go to the Planning Commission. And I've been back and forth on this, primarily due to, you know, I do appreciate someone having the freedom to do what they want to their property. But at the same time, you know, I'm going to state something that fortunately, we heard Mr. Farrell said, that I have been saying my entire life in Oakwood, especially in the last 15 years, every time we do a, get a complaint about something. Someone complains about parking at the OCC, some, you know, in their neighborhood, someone complains about noise at the high school, someone complains, I could keep going, I mean, just anything, complains about, you know, for the high school. I always say this, you know, a lot of people know I have a little humor in my conversation. I said, "Did you miss the big English Tudor when you bought your home? You know, they already bought it. You know, that was already there. You can't complain about noise. You, you bought next door, if you're on Spiree, Delwood, same thing with the OCC. Are you, did you miss the big pool when you bought on Patterson, or on Shance, or on Schaefer? I mean, they're all right there." And that's my biggest holdup on this, is that these property owners bought their properties with those conditions. And whether we think noise is the issue, or more water is the issue, or lighting is the issue, I can't go against what I've been preaching to Oakwood residents for years about, "Sorry, you bought on Patterson, you can't complain about kids screaming on a Saturday when they're at the pool." So, I'm not, this, and I already said to you, the changing of the balls and the paddles unenforceable. There's no way we can, we're not going to send our officers there to try to tell somebody to switch paddles. Okay, that's not practical.
I agree.
Yeah, so, I'm not sold on changing anything in a negative manner for these property owners for the two biggest concerns, which are, I don't want to add to water issues, because I know there's already water issues there, from what we're hearing, and from, you know, and I don't want to add to that. And I definitely don't want to do something that could decrease their property value. So, that's where I stand on this.
Councilmember Turbin?
I tend to agree. When I heard from the residents, especially mentioning property values and enjoyment of the residents, I, I sympathize with that, and I, I tend to agree with Councilmember Stevens.
Councilmember Jackson?
I would just ask my fellow councilmembers to think ahead about what the resistance will be from the neighborhood when we try to deal with the other properties that have not been developed yet. Specifically, the area north, the big hill right off of Far Hills. At one point, that was supposed to be a nursing, a nursing, nursing assistant nursing home. We have another parcel there that we talk about creating some type of park. Well, that will bring other people into the neighborhood. That will, that will create more parking issues. I think I could, I, I think just because it wasn't there before isn't a good argument that we shouldn't, we should not do it. The other thing is, I think it's part of being in a neighborhood. You hear noise, and it's hard for me to imagine that giving, given the plantings that are going to take place, given the traffic on Shance and Far Hills, that two to four people playing pickleball is going to make a difference in the sound. Well, I, I find that argument not compelling. To me, part of being in a neighborhood is hearing kids play basketball in the driveways. It's hearing kids roller skating or skateboarding. It's noise. Now admittedly, I hear the high school all the time, but it's just part, it becomes part of, it becomes part of the neighborhood, the sound of the neighborhood. And I think that, as much as I find, I can sympathize that it's difficult for people to accept change, I don't think this pickleball court's going to make any difference to the residents or the value of their home. It's one court, screened heavily, to serve a very specific population.
I'm recalling when the houses were first built on Far Hills, the ones closest to Far Hills, not the ones that are backing up to the hill. We were there for an open house ribbon-cutting right around 5:00 in the evening during rush hour. Rush hours of people coming out of downtown Dayton into Oakwood aren't like they used to be. But you could not hear a single car going by, going by the houses there on Point Oakwood. And then even when Flyboys was still around, you sat up on the balcony of Flyboys outdoors, and again, the car, this was more like at lunchtime, but you couldn't really even hear, couldn't really even hear, the cars were not distracting to sit on the roof of Flyboys and watch, watch the cars go by while you had your pastrami sandwich. But, and even, and, and again, with the noise issue on the top of a hill, heavily screened, I'm not, I'm not convinced that this would, that the noise issue is going to be as bad as, as the neighbors are projecting it to be. That's why I had some intrigue about noise-canceling, you know, okay, well, 75 decibels is too high, well, what about 50 decibels? You know, I've got people in my neighborhood that want to do away with aluminum bats at the baseball field because he lives a block and a half away from the baseball field, and that bothers him. He can't drink his coffee on his patio. Well, I can't tell the schools that, you know, "Get rid of your baseball field," or "Buy wooden bats," because schools are not going to buy wooden bats. I, I agree with, with you, Rob, that, that, you know, a property owner should have the right to do with his property what he wants to do, but, you know, we create, we create this construct to try to manage the competing rights. I mean, this, this isn't a, this isn't a slam dunk issue here. I mean, there's compelling arguments on both sides. I don't know that, you know, I think it's one of these things that we thought Shorey Road was the worst thing we could have possibly ever done, going from four lanes to two. That's about the only one that we end up with consensus afterward.
I don't know who "we" was, because I was all for it from the beginning.
Well, I, well, let's, I'm talking about the neighbors that, that, you know...
Some neighbors did, yes. But that was for multiple different reasons, yes, right.
Yeah, that's true, that's true, so...
But to clarify, the park, Mrs. Jackson, on the corner, that has almost no relative importance to this, because that's already determined, it'll be a passive park. There're not going to be any equipment, there won't be kids running around, that'll be a passive park.
There'll be people driving there to park.
Why would there be people driving there to park?
Because if there's a park, people go to it, and people drive to it.
I would be, I, okay, this is, this falls under the same conversation of, we don't know for sure what the noise would be, or the runoff would be, or the lighting issue would be. So that shows you can't change the way an area is after someone bought their property. And, and for the record, I would go out on a limb and say, no one's going to drive there to go to that park, a passive park. It's going to be a walkway, that park is going to be for the Point Oakwood residents.
What about the other area, Rob? What kind of, the, the area that's...
The parking lot up on the hill?
No, no, the, the, where the assisted living home.
Okay, way down, that's way down on the other end, okay?
Think of, think of all the, all the way we're going to be so afraid of what impact that will be on property values.
No, there won't be an impactful at all. Everyone knows that's going to be a commercial building. It's been drawn that way ever since the assisted living was proposed there, then they decided to pull out.
Well, then, again, that, that application has expired, so...
Well, it's expired now, but it doesn't matter.
It was the old assisted living, just for a point of reference to where it is right now, we have no applicants for any use of that property, and they would have to start, they'd have to go through our planning process and start over.
Right.
And at the top of the hill, you know, our legal settlement basically said, "That's going to be a passive park, and that's never going to get developed." Now, there's still two, two residential lots on West Shance that can be developed. And then farther west, as you go towards the cemetery, there's a parcel land there that's owned, part of our master plan, that could in fact be commercial.
Right. But the, the point is that the residents of Point Oakwood knew that that flat area down there at the city limits could be developed for a commercial building. So they already knew that when they bought. That's the whole point of that. Plus, it is, like I said, down at the bottom of the hill. So, and then, Bill, on your answer, I agree that the sound is very good when you're in your home at Point Oakwood, I've been in those homes. But if you're out on your front porch or your back porch, you can hear cars. And that was my comment about, I don't want to contribute more to the noise than there already is. You know, but they knew going in, they're buying on Far Hills, there's a lot of homes on Far Hills, you know, so they knew that going in, but just the additional noise potentially, additional water issues, that I don't, I haven't heard anyone tell me that the water issue has been resolved, and lighting. Now, lighting sounds like it's not a big deal to many people, and it sounds like we could put up two facing the Russell Building, great. But I'm not sold on this being beneficial to the area for Russell wealth management because they want to add an additional wellness facet to their portfolio.
When I came into this council meeting, I had pretty much in my mind, made up my mind that, that we were going to move forward with the pickleball court. But hearing and seeing all of the people who come to counsel, and, and what does concern me is that what Rob brought up, and that's always been in the back of my head, that only two people showed up for the Planning Commission. And, and so I'm thinking, "Well, it must not be that big a deal," but maybe it's because of the timing, and that might be something that we should look into. But, like I said, I, I thought I would approve the pickleball court, but I think at this point, I would decline it.
I recall the conflict...
I'm sorry, I didn't hear that.
I recall the conflict about the CVS store. At that time, I lived...
Well, that's going back down memory.
I know, but I think that there's, I think there's a track record of what happens. I lived right, I lived, I could see the CVS store, okay? And I, my neighbors were very much against the CVS store, the noise, the driving, and the CVS store got built. I don't think any of the neighbors, I, I think their fears were unfounded. And that's, that's the problem I have here, is that I, I feel that this is a pickleball court that won't be used very much, it will just be there. And, so I hate telling someone who owns the property they can't use the property for what they want it to be.
I've been the mayor since 2010, and we've only had one vote that was two to two. That's because I couldn't count votes. Explain to people watching what happens if you end up with a split vote.
Well, a split vote means that the motion doesn't carry. If you can't pass a motion to approve, then it's either a dead issue unless someone, or someone can propose a different motion. You know, that may be that there's some combination of conditions that would enable council to approve it, or that there's no combination of conditions, and you just, and you want to just let it die at that point.
My recollection is that's what you told me the last time.
Right. Failure to approve is effectively a denial, if that's, if that's where council's going to stop the process.
Yeah, I understand. Okay. Does anybody have any other comments you would like to make?
We don't have to just make a motion to approve, do we?
Yeah, well, she's made a motion to approve.
Right, it's already been moved and seconded to approve.
We can either call the motion that's already been written, or we can add a couple of additions to it, or we could vote to deny.
So we come down to a vote to deny then?
As it's currently been moved, it's, it's a motion to approve as recommended by the Planning Commission.
Fine, just wanted to clarify, we wouldn't change the motion then. We would just vote on this. We would not change the motion, correct?
That's up to you. If you, if you want to vote on, on as Planning Commission recommended it, that, that's what's currently pending. If you wanted to amend that to include the additional staff recommendations about the drainage and so forth...
Yeah, I get that.
You can, you can add that.
Okay.
Or it could be withdrawn altogether. It depends on which way you want to go.
What about what we did with the, the cookie store?
Well, I'm not certain I have any support for a decibel study on library pickleballs, so I was not planning on adding that as a, as a contingency. I do think, you know, we should add the additional staff recommendation on the water, but it may be a moot point. I think, I think what I'm hearing is it might be a moot point.
I'd rather go with the moot point, let's vote. I'd rather go with the moot point and let's vote.
Okay, you, you mean, there's no point in adding the staff's recommendations?
There's no point, yes, in my opinion.
We don't have the votes to pass.
Correct.
Okay. Anything else from the other council members? So I think it's been moved and seconded that the motion is to approve, uh, with, with these three, uh, contingencies that, that are in the, are in the motion, as you described before we started an hour and a half ago. So Lori, would you like to call the roll?
Mayor Duncan?
Yes.
Mr. Stevens?
No.
Mrs. Turbin?
No.
Mrs. Jackson?
Yes.
So the vote is two to two, which means that the motion...
Does not carry.
Does not carry, so the motion is denied. Or, or is it, is there clarification, we denied and not carry? Is, is, can he say, Rob's saying it's a moot point, but...
If council wishes to put forth a, a different motion, you can do that. If, if, if we're done at this point, then it's a motion that doesn't carry and it's effectively a denial.
Yeah, I think, I think that's where we're at.
Correct.
Council can... So the last time I lost a vote, I said, okay, let's move on with the agenda.
And we could do that whenever you're ready.
Yeah, well, I would like to call Vice Mayor Byington back to the dais first. Thank you, everyone here, thank you for your testimony, uh, we appreciate it. I think you understand that, that this was a harder issue, that, I mean, many of you think that this is a no-brainer, but it really isn't a no-brainer. And so we felt like, we felt like we wanted to give everybody the opportunity to speak, and we wanted to give the applicant their, their chance of, uh, presenting their position. So we thank you all for attending. And you're welcome to stay because we are getting ready to pass a budget, and that affects all you people that have these high house values and, and income taxes. We're not raising any taxes, we are going to raise your, uh, trash fees, right? Yeah, yeah, I, yeah, I'm not going to give you three chances at the microphone.
Your honor, before we...
Yes.
Start, can I just make a quick comment?
Yes, you may.
Sitting out in the audience, please, council, speak into the microphones. It is very difficult to hear the conversation that is taking place up here out there.
Really?
So, yes, please, I, I know we all hate...
Could you hear me?
No.
No?
Very, very rarely could I. I mean, I could, but, but it was not always, uh, legible.
I will make a request for our city manager to investigate getting rid of these damn things. They haven't worked since we, uh, came in here. I mean, over years, over years. And I apologize if, uh, the Miami Valley Communications Council can't figure out a way to make our stuff legible at home, because I've had that issue at home.
Well, maybe you can hear it at home, but it's, it's sitting in the seats, it's difficult to hear a conversation, so...
We have so few tests, but I agree, I, that, we, we need to fix that.
And I'm the same way, I, I tend to push the mic away.
Could you all hear us? Could you guys hear us over there, or are we...
It, it does help if you, if you get into the microphone, then it picks it up better.
Yeah, and we're not doing that, I, yeah.
Right, if you, if you're back here, it won't...
Pick it up, but if you get right on it, it'll pick up.
Pull the mic up.
Brian, could you hear us? Okay. But you're, but you're used to listening to us.
Moving on, moving on. Can you hear that?
Sorry, yeah.
Uh, it's, uh, okay, that led us first one, uh, now time for, uh, Mr. Stevens to, uh, present another scintillating concept, uh, our traffic code needs...
Thank you, Mayor Duncan. An ordinance to approve current replacement pages to the Oakwood Traffic and General Offenses Codes. Each year we pass an annual housekeeping ordinance to align our local traffic and general offenses codes with changes that have been made at the state level. This ordinance will adopt our 2024 replacement pages for the traffic code and the general offenses code. This ordinance was introduced with a first reading at our November meeting. This is the second reading of this ordinance. I move the council adopt it on an emergency basis in order to take effect immediately for the reasons stated in the ordinance.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any questions for Councilmember Stevens?
No.
Hearing none, Lori, would you please call the roll?
Mayor Duncan?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Byington?
Yes.
Mr. Stevens?
Yes.
Mrs. Turbin?
Yes.
Mrs. Jackson?
Yes.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry, and now, uh, uh, Councilmember Turbin has an ordinance regarding our water rates.
Yep, that would be me.
Oh, I'm sorry, one oh.
Vice Mayor Byington.
You're first, I'm sorry.
Yep.
I, I misspoke.
Your honor, this is an ordinance to make appropriations for current expenses and other expenditures of the City of Oakwood, State of Ohio, during the fiscal year ending December thirty-first, twenty twenty-five. This is our annual budget ordinance, which appropriates the city's funding for twenty twenty-five. This ordinance is required under section six point zero five of the city charter, and when adopted, provides formal authorization to the city manager to spend public dollars in providing city services. Our total city budget is divided into five primary parts with budgeted spending in each of, uh, as follows. General city services at seventeen million eight hundred and fifteen thousand nine hundred and five dollars, our refuse services at one million five hundred and ninety-three thousand five hundred and forty-seven dollars, our water services at one million nine hundred and ninety-one thousand seven hundred and thirty dollars, our sanitary sewer services at two million four hundred and sixty thousand three hundred and seventy-six dollars, and our stormwater services at four hundred and seventy-four thousand one hundred and fifty-seven dollars. Our city manager will now make some comments on the budget. Katie?
The city's annual budget is a true definition of a team project. Each year, the, um, finance department works with the city manager to collect the numbers for upcoming, um, the following year based upon salaries, wages, retirements, and, uh, necessary capital expenditures, and those numbers are compiled and then shared with staff, and then presented to the BRC, which that committee meets three times, um, October, November, and December to review and ratify the annual budget.
Uh, and as was mentioned, we do have a citizen budget, uh, committee that includes thirty-three members and is represented by residents from each of our eight voting precincts. That committee meets four times this year, as it is November nineteenth meeting, voted to endorse this twenty twenty-five budget. So, uh, under section three point zero four of the city charter, this ordinance will take effect upon its passage. I move that council waive the second reading and adopt it this ordinance this evening.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any questions for Vice Mayor Byington? Hearing none, Lori, would you please call the roll?
Mayor Duncan?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Byington?
Yes.
Mr. Stevens?
Yes.
Mrs. Turbin?
Yes.
Mrs. Jackson?
Yes.
Now, Councilmember Turbin has an ordinance.
Yes, thank you, mayor. All right, this is an ordinance to amend Appendix A Public Services Rate Sheet of the Oakwood Streets and Public Services Code to increase water service rates and refuse rates, rates. This is the first reading of an ordinance to increase the rates for our water and sanitary sewer utility services, which is needed in order to meet operational and upcoming capital needs. The city last raised water rates in twenty twenty-three and refuse rates in twenty nineteen. The increases would take effect January of twenty twenty-five. These rate changes were presented to the citizen-led Budget Review Committee as part of the twenty twenty-five budget briefing, and their response was positive. Under section three point oh four of the city charter, this ordinance will take effect upon its passage. I move that council waive the second reading and adopt this ordinance tonight.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any questions for Councilmember Turbin? Hearing none, Lori, would you please call the roll?
Mayor Duncan?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Byington?
Yes.
Mr. Stevens?
Yes.
Mrs. Turbin?
Yes.
Mrs. Jackson?
Yes.
And we're back to Vice Mayor Byington.
Yes, this is an ordinance to repeal ordinance number forty-nine eighty-seven and to establish an amended personnel schedule dated December second, twenty twenty-four, and declare an emergency. This is an ordinance to update the city's personnel schedule. For all non-bargaining unit employees, the updated schedule authorizes pay increases of two point nine five in twenty twenty-five. Uh, these are responsible increases for our non-union employees that are consistent with the raises authorized by current collective bargaining agreements for union employees. This ordinance is being introduced as an emergency measure to ensure that it takes effect as of the first pay period of twenty twenty-five, which begins on December sixteenth, twenty twenty-four. Uh, I move that council adopt this ordinance tonight as an emergency measure for the reasons stated in the ordinance.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any questions for Vice Mayor Byington? Hearing none, Lori, would you please call the roll?
Mayor Duncan?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Byington?
Yes.
Mr. Stevens?
Yes.
Mrs. Turbin?
Yes.
Mrs. Jackson?
Yes.
And Vice Mayor Byington, you still have the floor.
Yes, uh, this is an ordinance to set the maximum compensation of the, uh, of the Oakwood Municipal Court Clerk, Deputy Clerk of Court, and Bailiff, and to declare an emergency. By law, the Oakwood Municipal Judge determines the actual salary for each court employee, but city council is responsible for setting the maximum amount to be paid for each job classification within the court. This ordinance will increase the maximum compensation for all court employee job classifications by two point nine five percent, consistent with the increases for union and non-bargaining unit, uh, employees. I move the council adopt this as an emergency ordinance so that these pay increases will be effective, consistent with the timing of pay increases being given to office and management staff.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions for Vice Mayor Byington? Hearing none, Lori, would you please call the roll?
Mayor Duncan?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Byington?
Yes.
Mr. Stevens?
Yes.
Mrs. Turbin?
Yes.
Mrs. Jackson?
Yes.
And Vice Mayor Byington has our final piece of legislation.
Bring it home. Uh, an ordinance to establish an amendment to the organization and staffing schedule for the purpose of modifying the administrative support classifications within the safety department to include a full-time and part-time department head administrative assistant slash records clerk, and declaring an emergency. This is an ordinance to update our organization and staffing schedule so it reflects the city's current staffing needs. I move that council adopt this ordinance tonight as an emergency measure for the reasons stated in the ordinance.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions for Vice Mayor Byington? Hearing none, Lori, would you please call the roll?
Mayor Duncan?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Byington?
Yes.
Mr. Stevens?
Yes.
Mrs. Turbin?
Yes.
Mrs. Jackson?
Yes.
That concludes our legislation this evening. Uh, we have no staff report, even though all our staff's here, and we appreciate you staying through this, uh, uh, long, long-held event. And, uh, I'll now turn it over to our city manager. Welcome.
Thank you, mayor and city council. On Sunday evening, December eighth, the Holiday of Lights festivities will take place at Schaefer Park beginning at six-thirty. Mayor Duncan will open the event, and the Oakwood High School Band will perform holiday songs, and rumor has it that Santa will be arriving on an Oakwood fire truck. So everyone's invited and encouraged to attend this family-friendly community event. Autumn leaf pickup is scheduled to conclude on Friday, December twentieth, so please continue to rake your leaves directly to the curb, unbagged, a day or two prior to your scheduled pickup. And the city will be picking up holiday trees according to the normal yard debris collection schedule. As a reminder, trees should be placed at the, at the property frontage as close to the, uh, curb as possible. Please do not put the trees in the street. Lastly, I'd like to take a moment to wish a very happy birthday to the twelve Oakwood employees who have a December birthday. We appreciate all the hard work and dedication you bring to the team. That's my report.
Thank you. Any questions for our city manager? All right, good job. Um, it's now time for council comments, uh, Councilmember Jackson.
Thank you, mayor. The Oakwood Historical Society's annual holiday home tour takes place this Saturday. The tour features five historically significant homes in two distinct areas known historically as the Mayfield, Mazefield, Oakwood Platt, and Houck Platt. And if you're lucky, you, there's still tickets available, uh, there's detailed information on their website. And although I'm the council's liaison with the historical society, my using my, um, council comments to talk about this tour is not to promote sales. It's really because I want to publicly, publicly thank the homeowners who opened their door to several hundred ticket holders. It's pretty intimidating to welcome several hundred people into your home and hear their comments about your home. So this is why I want to thank the homeowners who spend hours to prepare and decorate their homes. Thank you also for remaining in your home to answer guests' questions that the docent might not be able to answer. Uh, your presence really adds to the hospitality the society hoped to present when the home tour was conceived. The original planners envisioned the tour as a way to share Oakwood's history, sense of community, and our hospitality. So thank you, homeowners.
Thank you. Councilmember Turbin?
Yes, thank you, mayor. Well, I wanted to congratulate Betty Hallie Jones on her one-hundredth birthday. This lovely lady, I first met Betty when I was doing research on the Dayton Project. Uh, she was actually the head of the Detonator Group, and so that interview grew into a wonderful relationship. Um, so congratulations, Betty, we hope that there will be many, many more. And I also wanted to wish everyone a happy holiday season and remind you to buy Oakwood. Um, Oakwood's got some great innovative, um, boutiques and, that are unique, and you can get that one-of-a-kind gift and support your local retail, so buy Oakwood.
Councilmember Stevens?
Thank you, Bill. Uh, just want to thank, uh, the entire, uh, Oakwood city staff for all their hard work this year in twenty twenty-four. Uh, it's been a, a wonderful year, um, a lot of new things going on, um, a lot of the same old things going on, and, uh, uh, which is a good thing, don't take that the wrong way. And I appreciate all the hard work by all of our city employees. Uh, and finally, I'll do the same thing, happy holidays to everyone and a happy new year.
Vice Mayor Byington?
Rob always steals my thunder. I did want to say, uh, thanks to the staff. At, at the end of the year, you always kind of look back and reflect on all the things that have changed and things that stayed the same, and, you know, we have such a fantastic group that it makes our job considerably easier, uh, to do what we do. So, uh, thank you for that. I want to also thank all the folks who came this evening. Uh, the true measure, I think, of any great community is the willingness of people to participate in the governmental process, to share their thoughts and their ideas and things that they're passionate about. Um, so I, I'm very thankful when people do come and share their thoughts, uh, with us, uh, it makes our job that much easier. Sometimes harder, but that's, that's part of the, part of the, uh, the reason that we're here as, uh, representatives for everybody. And I also will say, uh, happy holidays to all. I hope to see all of you at the tree lighting December eighth. Um, and, uh, if you're there, I will make sure to put a word to Santa, so...
You've got that much pull?
I've got that clout, yeah.
Wow, okay. Uh, I would like to, um, report, I think it was in the Oakwood Register a couple weeks ago, that our former city manager received an award from the National Aviation Heritage Area on his assistance in, uh, transitioning, um, Hawthorne Hill to the National Park Service and additional, uh, additionally, uh, doing what needed to be done for the, uh, public announcement they had with Joby Aviation here at, uh, at Hawthorne Hill. And, uh, he got a, got a call basically from the Dayton Development Coalition that says, we've got a major thing that we want to announce, we've got a, the governor's coming, uh, the lieutenant governor's coming, uh, Senator Brown's coming, Congressman Turner's coming, and we can't tell you what it's about. So he did a great job coordinating that along with all of our staff, blocking off streets, doing this, that, and the other. And then, uh, uh, but what I, what didn't make the Oakwood Register was the fact that Vice Mayor Byington also received an award from the National Aviation Heritage Area, and it was for your work at Wright Patterson dealing with, uh, what, what do you call it?
Historic preservation.
Historic preservation, because that's his job out at Wright Pat, among many other jobs. So, uh, we had all of city council there for, for that award, and, uh, wanted to just give you kudos for your, your efforts on behalf of Wright Pat and our region. And then, um, I wanted to, again, thank the staff for all their efforts, and, uh, I was And then I wanted to, again, thank the staff for all their efforts, and I was really excited because I've only raked my leaves twice, and within forty-eight hours, they were picked up. So I don't know if that's the good work you did or just timing, but...
Licked out.
I licked out, I think, yeah. But I appreciate that. And I know I've got it to do one more time, and my lawnmower died, so I'm hoping I can get my lawnmower back by Christmas, so I can at least cut my grass. It needs one more, that's all it needs, so. Our next meeting is going to be on Monday, January 6th, 2025. If council could stay for about ninety more seconds, we need to do an organization meeting for our Community Improvement Corporation. So we, the city council meeting is adjourned.